Yeah, we're running just a little behind. Trouble with going live to Facebook. Evening. How you doing, Mr. Klenke?
How you doing?
Good. Good, yeah. Trouble with being live on Facebook is I can't play any music because it's all copyrighted music and will get booted. So we have no audio because all the pots are down on your end. So I've got this mic live so that we've got some sound over the air. And now you know the rest of the story. I have to find some music that's not copyrighted that I can play. Stuff that I make myself or something. Yeah. It's a good idea.
We're just waiting for one more board member. The meeting will begin shortly. He's trying to say something.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Directors of Tacoma Public Schools of January 24th, Thursday, January 4th to order. Please rise for the flag salute. Director Cobb, would you please read us in the flag salute to this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We just finished, and I want to apologize for starting late. We just finished graduating eight young people from the Willie Stewart Academy, which is our school for kids who kind of take the long way to graduate. And we've graduated a large number of them, and it's always such a wonderful experience. So we apologize for being a little bit late, but there's a lot of celebration going on in the other room across the hall. General Counsel, could you please call the roll?
Yes, President Viall.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Cobb.
Here.
And our Vice President Hines and Director Leon excused.
Yes, they are. Thank you. Pardon me. Item four, adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption of the agenda for this evening.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption of the agenda for this evening signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Hearing none. Agenda is adopted for O. Item five, recognition of staff, students, and the community. Approval of recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Mr. Patrick Martin.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Directors, President Viall. My name is Amanda Scott Thomas. I'm the Director of the Community Partnership Office. And as you know, each month we recognize partnerships that promote and support student success. We know that Tacoma Public School defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school districts, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting the academic success and the success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that we cannot do it alone. In recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for Tacoma Public School's students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. Tonight, for your consideration, we have a partner, Mr. Patrick Martin. And to talk about the program, we have John Page that's going to come up and tell you a little bit about why Mr. Martin is receiving the award.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is John Page, and I do serve as the Director for Career and Technical Education. And what an honor tonight to recognize Mr. Patrick Martin. Patrick currently serves as a compliance specialist for the Washington State Department of Labor and Industries, and stepped out of his primary role to ensure the success of our youth apprenticeship program in Tacoma Public Schools. Mr. Martin, his passion for community, youth development, and apprenticeships led him to volunteer to take on this monumental task of getting Tacoma Public Schools approved as a sponsoring agency of youth apprenticeships, resulting in an expansion of youth apprenticeships for Tacoma students. Over the last few years, Governor Jay Inslee has stressed the importance of providing students with alternative pathways to the traditional college four-year degree program. Being a product of an electrical apprenticeship himself, Mr. Martin saw an opportunity to serve the community by volunteering his expertise to help us set up the processes and gain approval from the Washington State Apprenticeship and Training Council. Strongly cemented in two of our district's goals, safety and partnerships, Patrick took the lead in conjunction with our Department of Career and Technical Education and formed a working group resulting in the approval of three training agents of youth apprenticeships here in Tacoma. Titus Will Ford for the automotive service technician, Pacific Grill for the preparatory cook, and IDX for the production cabinet assembler. This groundbreaking endeavor is important to students, families, and business partners by providing comprehensive training programs for students to combine 2,000 hours of paid apprenticeship employment with 144 hours of related supplemental instruction. Students completing the apprenticeship are prepared with documented work history, leadership skills, and technical skills specific to in-demand, livable-wage career pathways. Patrick led Tacoma's goal to be one of the first school districts in the history of the state of Washington to implement youth apprenticeships in high school programs. The work was hard. Patrick anticipated and responded to many twists and turns that were still being developed as the state guidelines emerged. He helped Tacoma's business partners, teachers, and administrators learn the policies and processes of various state agencies and affiliations. Looking to the future, Patrick is now advising the district on how to expand opportunities in our established in-demand, livable-wage pathways of computer sciences, healthcare careers, skilled technical trades, and environmental services. He also is helping us explore the opportunities of pre-apprenticeships while advising us on articulations with adult apprenticeships. We truly thank Patrick Martin this evening for his relentless, innovative, and nurturing leadership for building stronger systems and removing barriers for Tacoma students to prepare for and have access to in-demand, livable-wage careers.
Thank you, John.
I'll be very brief. Thank you very much for this award, but more importantly, I wanted to say thank you to you as a school district, as a school board, in embracing these different innovative pathways for students. You know, I remember when I went through school and we were plugged all along that college is the only way, but it's not the only way. And there's a lot of opportunity out there for kids who are willing to work with great support of these instructors, CTE directors, sky's the limit. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also here tonight are our youth apprenticeship coordinators for the district, Jeff Klenke and Jared Foss. They just have something small, a token for Patrick.
So, in addition to the Golden Star, the CTE department also has a Golden Attitude Award. And the Golden Attitude Award is for distinctive leadership, in which Patrick demonstrated throughout the youth apprenticeship approval process. The second category is a lot easier. You have to be here. And the third is to be recognized in front of friends and family. And for that, we welcome Patrick into the Tacoma family as one of our community partners.
And I want to thank our technical and our CTE staff for what they do. I expect that one of these days, we're going to have an update here on the board from them, and what some of the programs and things that they are doing with career and technical education is mind-boggling. This is just an example of it. So hopefully Superintendent will get an update from John before too long on all the CTE programs, some of the new initiatives, and things that are going on. So, John, I just gave you more work to do, sorry. But it's good work. Thank you very much. All right. Superintendent's report.
Mrs. Janet Stewart. Are you here, Janet? There she is.
There she is.
So Janet did a great job at last board meeting of recognizing some students from her Reflections Project, and she missed two students. And so I think it's great that she asked if we would recognize them. And this is Janet Stewart from the Tacoma Council PTA. Thanks, Janet.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have, I think, just one person today. This is kind of make-up session for those that didn't make it on January 10th, the school board meeting. And I know her name is Marina Baker. She's from Truman Middle School. Come on up. She wrote a wonderful story. Our theme this year for the Reflections Program is Heroes Around Me. And she wrote a story about heroes, including teachers, and her family, her pets, and there was one other teacher's family, pets, military. And so I guess, is there anybody else? Did I miss anybody that's here for Reflections? Okay. So Marina, I think that will conclude it. We'll have you, if you could come up the ramp for safety and go shake hands. And if her parents could have, like, just a quick second to flash a photo, maybe if she turns around and... You guys could just stay there so we don't take up too much time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Second thing for the superintendent's report, just wanted to acknowledge all the great activities that went on Monday for the Martin Luther King Ceremony. And we had so many staff that participated. We had a group of TEA and our teachers' union and our staff that went down to Tetlow Park and did incredible work. I heard there was also cutting of blackberry bushes that they were clearing. That was great. And then we had a lot of staff that showed up at the Martin Luther King actual ceremony that was in the city. It was well done. And I know there were breakfasts and lots of other things that went on, so I just want to appreciate the way the school district and the city came together to celebrate Martin Luther King.
Thank you. Now, item seven, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members, encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated if you would like to address the school board. Follow these, pardon me, these three, these steps. Complete a citizens' request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after public comment has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, and if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. If you are speaking, you have a screen over there which shows three minutes, and when you are down to one minute left, you will get a little ding on there, and it will tell you that you have one minute to complete your remarks. And we would appreciate it if you could complete those remarks within the allotted period of time. Thank you. Superintendent Santorno, if you would, please.
First speaker is Joseph Phillips. If he'll come up. And then he will be followed by Susan M. Lord and Janet Runbeck.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Phillips, and I'm the chairman of the Drug Awareness Program of the Tacoma at Large. This program strives to teach children and parents about dangers of illegal drugs and present, prevent the use of legalized prescriptions drugs. As the largest volunteer drug awareness program in the United States, the program relies on the state, district, and volunteers to promote a drug-free lifestyle. By taking pride in America's communities and youth, the program takes action against youth drugs used through education and exploration. In 1962, I'm sorry, '82, the ELKS developed an effective community-based drug prevention program by partnering with the federal agencies, including Drug Enforcement Agency and many others. These partnerships ensure the ELKS Drug Awareness Program addresses the leading drugs-accusing abuse issues facing the community today. ELKS believes that the youth of the day are the leaders of tomorrow. With this in mind, the ELKS Drug Awareness Program reaches out to youth across the country through 2,100, 2,100 large units in the United States. ELKS works hard to combat youth substance abuse. Elroy, the mascot, reminds kids that hugs are better than drugs. The older kids see these acts, these alcohol consumption by wearing failure vision goggles. Every year, the Drug Awareness Program hands out about seven billion pieces of anti-drug paraphernalia for parents and teachers. The ELKS also team up with Marvel comic books to produce, featuring Marvel superheroes in battling against unaided drinking. The ELKS Large itself is trying to ask the partnership with the Tacoma Schools to give its students an opportunity to be a part of the solution. By participating in the annual essay and the poster essays, they express their feelings. As the board, can you provide me with the name of the person whereby we could use that person to come work with me, to work in the school system, to have an impact on drugs in our school systems? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Susan Lord, followed by Janet Runbeck.
We're kind of a two-for-one special. So my name is Susan Lord, and this is my friend Janet Runbeck. We both are volunteers from the Pierce County Coalition Against Trafficking. First of all, we'd like to thank you for the service you do to our community. Human trafficking is the use of force, fraud, or coercion to control other people for the purpose of engaging in commercial sex acts or forcing them to provide labor services against their will. While most human, while most people, including myself, five or six years ago, we think that victims are foreign nationals that come into the U.S., do you know that human trafficking is happening here in Pierce County, too? The reality is that 83% of sex-trafficked victims in the United States are domestic-born children from our own backyards. Our coalition was founded five years ago, and we work within our Pierce County community, collaborating with people from the educational community, the nursing community, the medical community. And we, our mission is to let our neighbors know that human trafficking of children is happening right here in our own neighborhood.
Yes, thank you for letting us present. Washington Trafficking Prevention, which is the parent organization of our coalition, believes that the best method for preventing sex trafficking is through effective, strong youth programs. And to that end, we have three goals that we would like you to consider. One is train all of your staff, and everybody in the staff, the janitor through the teachers, on the signs and symptoms of what sex trafficking looks like in the victims, and that they all know the reporting policies within your schools. The second goal we'd like to consider is to increase awareness of sex trafficking by all parents of grade six through 12. And the third goal is to train staff to implement a program. And we do provide two programs. One is for middle school, Empower Youth Program. It's five lessons, 20 minutes each. The second one is for high school, Take On, is a Chicago Alliance Against Sex Exploitation Program. Both of these programs are, will integrate into existing curricula nicely, and they're approved for the core curriculum and for the Health Ed and English and Language Arts standards. So with that in mind, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
And can we just mention that we left some, we left some flyers for you if you want to have some more information about our association.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work that you do.
Gina Coleman is next. Sorry, I didn't give you an advance notice, followed by Heidi Barby. Thanks, Gina.
That's all right, I'm prepared. Good evening, respected members of the board, Superintendent Santorno and Assistant Superintendent Garcia. I'm Gina Coleman, Nutrition Manager at Largemont Elementary in East Tacoma, and President of our Tacoma Food Service Union. I want you to know that I understand the sacrifice you've made by serving as a school board member, and your services are much appreciated. My purpose in speaking with you this evening is to express concerns regarding proposed changes to the school lunch menu, which are designed to reduce expenses. We are concerned that the reductions in the healthy menu options, sorry, along with the repetitive nature of the proposed menu will not be supported by parents. We believe the resulting loss of participation in our lunch program will reduce revenue at far greater amounts than the projected cost savings of the menu changes. I speak for my members when I say that we are proud to prepare and serve over a million meals a year to our students. We support the focus on the whole child and submit to you that eliminating healthy choices and variety in our menu is not consistent with supporting our students to be healthy and engaged. I believe in the phrase, "You can't teach a hungry child." These proposed changes are not only the wrong thing to do for our children, but also will make the financial situation worse as our participation in the lunch program will go down. Take a good look at our breakfast numbers. Please reconsider the proposed changes to the menu, or at least work with us to come up with a comparable solution. Nutrition in schools is grossly underfunded. Therefore, historically, districts bear the additional costs. Relative to the district's budget, the food cost is just a smidge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gina, and we do really appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
Heidi Barby. Barabi? Thank you.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Heidi Barby, and I'm an instructional coach here in the district at Washington Elementary, also a parent to a first grader here, and still consider myself a teacher. And I'm here to speak kind of from all three of those lenses on the phonics curriculum that's being piloted in the schools right now. I appreciate all the effort, time, resources that have gone into building a balanced literacy framework, and we've seen a lot of great, high-quality resources coming to our teachers. We've got the classroom libraries, the guided reading bookrooms, the shared reading books. And I think we've kind of realized that the hole that is there is the high-quality resources to fill the need for our phonics curriculum at the K-2 level. So we've been piloting the curriculum for, I guess, we're in the week three now. My first grader, the other day, riding home in the car, turned to my four-year-old and said, "Tree, T-R-E-E, but you can also spell E with an EA." These are skills that, when I read to them at night, and when they dig into books on their own, they're not thinking about, they're, you know, getting more fluent. We've got those resources there that are allowing our teachers to teach the most rigorous standards. So I appreciate that we're looking for something that fills that foundational need. The pilot's going well. The teachers are so appreciative of this. They said that the data is showing that that's the hole that their kids have. And I just appreciate you guys continuing to roll these resources out so that our teachers can do the best job at teaching our primary kids to learn to read. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate the feedback, more than you know. Okay, I will close the public comment period now, and we will move on to the consent agenda, item eight. Just so the public knows, there's a lot of items, it appears, on the consent agenda. The board receives these prior to the board meeting, and we have the opportunity at that point in time to review all of them. And if we have questions or comments at that, we normally make them at that time, too, either the superintendent or the deputy superintendent. But I would entertain a motion to adopt a consent agenda.
Move adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. The consent agenda is adopted, 3.0. Moving on to, scroll down here. Item nine, policy matters, seeing there are none. Item 10, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org about finance. Moving forward, item 11, curriculum and instruction. Item 11-1, acceptance of the Title II grant, part of a grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. Is that yours?
Sure. Okay.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors accept the award of Title II Part A grant funds in the amount of $1,320,562, and the expenditure funds in accordance with the accepted guidelines, funding source OSPI.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item 11-1. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted, 3-0. Item 11-2, acceptance of Title IV, a part of a grant from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction. Dr. Garcia, please.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors accept the award of the Title IV Part A grant funds in the amount of $670,007, and the expenditure of funds in accordance with the accepted guidelines, funding source OSPI.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item 11-2. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Director Cobb, if you would, please.
I think this is the second year that we've received this grant. I'm just curious, I think, I'm just wondering where we've chosen to focus. I know that there are a lot of allowable uses of these funds, so can you tell us a little bit more about where we'll focus?
Here comes Marie.
And I was prepared for that question. So, actually, this is our first year for Title IV A grant funds, and the state has given us... and healthy schools, students, and evident effective use of technology. And then underneath each of those categories, obviously, there's more specifics. So, for Tacoma Public Schools this year, we have used, looked through some of our needs assessments that we have, such as the audit that we did a couple of years back, some of our climate survey data, and we have determined that to be able to fully use those dollars, we wanted to allot them towards a little bit from each category. So, we are using some of the funds, most of the funds actually, not some, most of the funds are going to fund FTE at the district level, and that FTE is in the form of instructional facilitators or teachers on special assignment. So we are funding our advanced programs, support person, our teacher on special assignment, which falls under the well-rounded education category. Our new teacher mentor, so the best grant covers most of that, or some of that, but it doesn't cover all of that. And one of the allowable categories is the support of new teachers. So one of our facilitators, FTE, is coming out of that. Also, another area that's allowable or acceptable under this is the use of data, more effective use of data. So one of the data coaches that work on the DART department is also being funded from that. And then finally, the safe and healthy students. You know that we're in the process of, or we've adopted new health curriculum, and so our health specialist, FTE, our person that over, that's working with both P.E. and music, we're funding that person. In addition, there is approximately fifty thousand dollars remaining from that overall money, and we could also look at ways to support students in world languages. So, you know about our world language competency-based testing that we do to provide students with high school credit and the seal of biliteracy. Some of the funds are being used to support that testing, continued testing, and then a little bit more will be used to support the physical education adoption. Thank you.
I have the exact same question.
Okay, great.
Did I answer that okay?
Yes. Thank you. This is the superintendent. Any more questions or comments? Okay, all of, it looks like this is a nice little pot of money for us to supplement a lot of the things that we're doing. So, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is adopted. Right, moving on to business matters, item twelve, approval of dairy contract to Meadows Sweet Farms. Mr. Williams, if you would, please.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors award the contract for dairy products to Meadows Sweet Farms and authorize a superintendent to award and sign a contract for the period of February first, two thousand and nineteen, through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item twelve-one, approval of dairy contract to Meadows Sweet Farms. Are there any questions or comments, members of the board? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carries, three oh. Item twelve-two, acceptance of City of Tacoma contract awarding funds to District for Tacoma Whole Child Mental Health Intervention Programs. Mrs. Pace.
Thank you. The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors agree to enter into a contract with the City of Tacoma to deliver the Tacoma Whole Child Mental Health Interventions Program. Accept funds not to exceed three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars, and approve expenditure of funds according to accepted guidelines. Funding source, City of Tacoma.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and, and adopted, it's, I'm sorry, it's been moved, approval. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board?
I have one question.
Yeah, I do when you're through, go ahead.
I was just curious, this, we know that students, more and more students have mental health needs, so how do we currently, or how will we, with the help of these funds, make sure that we're identifying students with the most need for additional support? Like, what's our process to ensure that we can do that systematically?
I believe Director Laura Allen will answer that question for us.
I can support with this one. Most of our sites have a multi-prong approach to this, and that includes a snapshot where they have a chance to consult with counselors, with administrators, with teachers, to surface students with the greatest needs. From there, they'll be routed into different interventions, depending on what we see that function, what we best help them. So in this grant specifically, we're looking at two different interventions that would serve either social skills and victimization and bullying, or students that are working with trauma and depression and anxiety.
Thank you.
Gee, I'd like my comment, just shortly before Christmas, Laura, you can sit down. Thank you. I went down to the city council meeting at their last, their last meeting, and Mayor Woodard's issued the proclamation claiming this month, and I was asked to deliver some remarks, and I did, and what I focused on was how much money the City of Tacoma has given us since they began this program. When this is completed by the year of two thousand and twenty, this grant that they're giving us now, in addition, it's almost nine hundred and nine, nine hundred thousand dollars, they will, the City of Tacoma will have given us over a million and a half dollars towards this program since the time that it started, when, when the voters approved the money for mental health. And I think that speaks volumes for our community, that our city council supports what we're doing and supports it that strongly, and I want to, again, thank the city council and the mayor for, for their involvement in this, and providing those dollars that kind of go across the board, and you'll see as we approve these, the, like, this one is going for one specific things, and they narrow down, and they come back, and, and they are committed to supporting our efforts in the whole child. And during my time when I was down there in Mayor Woodard's job a long time ago, very few school districts had the support of their city and their city council and their mayor that we have had over the years, and I think we should be very thankful. I call that the Tacoma way, about when we have a problem here in Tacoma, everybody steps up and, and gets in behind, and a million and, a million point seven is a lot of money for the city to be allocating to us out of that fund. So if you see a city council member, tell them thank you. Okay, moving on, item number, number twelve-three, acceptance of City of Tacoma contract awarding funds. Pardon me, did I skip one?
I think we need to still.
Oh, we need to vote, all right. Any other comments, Debbie, do you have? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I have option, item is adopted. Thank you, madam. Okay, now can I move on? I'm in a hurry.
Please.
Not really. Item twelve-three, acceptance of City of Tacoma contract awarding funds to District for Tacoma Whole Child Restorative Justice Program. Mrs. Pace.
Thank you. The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors agree to enter into a contract with the City of Tacoma to deliver the Whole Child Restorative Justice Program. Accept funds not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and approve expenditures of funds according to accepted guidelines. Funding source, City of Tacoma.
I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item twelve-three. Is there any questions or comments by members of the board?
So I have a, Director Wenske. So I have a question. So I, I see that, you know, it's all doing discipline in a different way, and, so I'd like to know more about restorative justice. So, I don't need to know more about it right now unless you have a quick capsule, encapsulated definition of it, but kind of what, what it does in the schools.
Why don't we have Superintendent Santorno respond in a Friday report, so we can get a little more, yeah, a little more meat to the report, if you don't mind?
That'd be fine.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have a comment, too.
Director Cobb?
It'd be great to get the follow-up report, and I know that Jason Lee is implementing some restorative justice practices. But my, I just, I'm gonna vote for this, but I just have a real strong concern about some of the language in the background description. There's a sentence in here that makes reference to perceptions of students being defiant, disrespectful, and insubordinate, and that is really subjective language that has been part of the issues around having our disproportionate outcomes related to student discipline. So, in the Friday report, it would be great to see a reframing around this issue, or a reframing around the potential of restorative justice. And in general, I always think, connecting that point, I always think about the frame on kind of restoring or keeping intact the community, but I really want to hear more about the connection to our PBIS implementation, too, and thinking about school climate and culture, because if the community doesn't feel whole in the first place for some of our students, and we are jumping to restoring that community or making sure that stays intact, I feel like we miss a step. So, I'm all for alternative approaches and non-punitive approaches to student discipline, but also ensuring that we continue to do the work on culture and climate to make sure that students feel safe in those spaces in the first place.
So I'd like to just add to that, too, if I may.
Go ahead, and I'd like to comment.
I just want to say that I want to make sure that the students aren't kind of humiliated by any kind of process, and maybe you were kind of getting at that, too. So that, that's kind of restorative justice, I'm just not, that's why I want to know more about it and how that works, so.
I'm, I'm with you, Director Cobb, on the language. I think we can do a better job when we write, write the language up, and I think we kind of forget sometimes, and just, we become bureaucrats every once in a while, and you know, you work in a bureaucratic organization, you know how that can happen. I'm not making any excuses, but I think, I think we can, and we adjust rapidly around here and things. And I know that Jason Lee has seen some real success with their, some of their program, their program that they have been running on restorative justice, and I don't know about kids being humiliated or whatever. I think sometimes it gives them an opportunity to work through some issues, from what I understand, and I've been over there, not this year, but a year ago, and with some of the kids, and to, it's a, for some of the kids, I think it's a very positive program. So anyway, I agree with you in that, and hopefully we can do a little better job, and I'm sure we can, I know we can, we'll fix it. Dr. Garcia, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, just to build on, Director Cobb, the Tacoma Whole Child has eight pillars. PBIS, social, emotional learning, continuous improvement, tiered, advanced tiers. So I wouldn't want the community to think that restorative justice is the Tacoma Whole Child initiative, is one element of the pillars, and so we'll put together some information that will also include that in the Friday report, as well as how it's being used, what's the plan for sustainability. So the staff has done a nice job of putting some of those pieces to place, and this is just one element of how we support the whole child. It is not meant to be punitive, forceful, and so we will, we will find a way to articulate that in that Friday report.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of adoption of twelve-three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is adopted, three oh. Moving on, item twelve-four, acceptance of City of Tacoma contract, pardon me, sustaining, awarding sustaining funding for the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative. Mrs. Pace, again, please.
Thank you. The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors agree to enter into a contract with the City of Tacoma to continue provision of universal whole child screenings and supports. Accept funds not to exceed two hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, and approve expenditure of funds according to accepted guidelines. Funding source, City of Tacoma.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item twelve-four. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is adopted, three oh. Moving on, other business, I see there is none. Report to the board, superintendent, is that yours? If the fourteen-one, Superintendent Benchmark Report, Annual Academic Excellence Graduation.
Yes, Tony Pace and Marie are gonna come up and present that.
Great.
Good evening, President Yell, Vice President Hines, who's not here, sorry, members of the board.
He's got a bad cold, unfortunately.
I know, and hopefully my voice will hold up, I'm better now, but it's still a little cracked. Assistant Superintendent Pace and I are here tonight to present to you the annual report for, on academic excellence, the strategic plan goal. Specifically, the presentation will focus on the benchmark of the percentage of students who graduated on time, dropped out, or who were continuing. This data is from the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. This is a beautiful and very pleasing graph for all of us to look at and share, and reshare, and reshare, and reshare. Our graduation rates for the class of two thousand seventeen, eighteen increased by three point two percent from the previous school year. As is evident from this slide, Tacoma Public Schools has seen a continual increase over the past six years, with a nineteen point one percent increase since two thousand thirteen.
This slide is showing our graduation rate by student group, and it also, it shows basically that all groups made growth from last year, except the Pacific Islander. However, they did surpass the district goal. I'm gonna move through these fairly quickly, because I am gonna be looking at key points, key findings of this data, so we'll get into more depth when we get to that slide. But this is, the next, the next slide is an additional slide on graduation by student group. Again, these groups all made growth from last year, and just wanted to bring special recognition to special education, which had a significant gain. And so our key findings, as we look closely at the data presented, we see that the obvious, the obvious statistic that Tacoma Public Schools has exceeded the eighty-five percent goal set for two thousand and twenty. Other significant findings include our graduation rate, which has increased nineteen point one percent in six years. We have data that shows our dropout rate continues to decrease over the last six years. All student groups, with the exception of American Indian, Alaska Native, graduated at or above the district goal of eighty-five percent. And like I said earlier, special education students saw the most significant increase with ten point six percent. So great celebration. ELL students increased by seven point four percent. Multi and Hispanic students each increased approximately seven point five percent respectively. And looking at the three-year trend, males, Hispanics, Pacific Islanders, special education, ELL, free and reduced lunch, they all made significant gains. So overall, there's quite a lot to celebrate.
So, we still have ten point seven percent to go to reach a hundred percent, which we're on par to do. So we've identified these next steps, as some of the next steps we're working on, obviously there's always more. The work to continue to provide laser-focused support on teaching and learning continues with the alignment of standards, the vetting and procurement of additional instructional resources, and the, in continuing to offer quality opportunities for professional development growth for all staff. We continue to provide students with multiple opportunities for equitable access to rigorous programming and curriculum that includes high-quality instructional practices, leading students to advanced program opportunities in our programs such as Avid, IB, AP, College in the High School, and Running Start. As you've heard more about last week at our work study, the continuous achievement process, or the CAP process, with the quarterly cycles, is enabling staff to identify the students who need additional support and designing ways to fill the gaps continuously throughout the year. We continue to add to our portfolio of innovative pathways, which we heard about tonight, and the percentage of high school students graduating on time drop, or who dropped out or are continuing for, let me rephrase that, for the students who have, who are identified in the benchmark. One example of one of the innovative programs is our Medical Pathways Program. Next year, our students will be required to pass a new science assessment. This assessment is based on the next-generation science standards. To this end, we have prioritized the standards, we've vetted the current or existing curriculum, and we're in the process of updating our elementary, middle, and high school curriculum. Finally, the DART team has built and pushed out to all high school principals comprehensive reports that provide dynamic data at the fingertips regarding students who have met and who, or who still need to meet high school requirements for graduation. These reports have and will continue to enable staff to have informed data to build necessary plans for students to ensure they meet the necessary requirements. In the appendix to this report tonight, you will find the five-year extended data and the dropout data for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen cohort.
I noticed that that five-year right now mirror, the four and the five-year are mirroring each other within a percentage, less, well, a tenth of a percent. That's good. Okay.
So that's the end of our presentation, what questions you have for us?
Questions and comments. Director Cobb?
I am just curious about the, the increase in the graduation rate for students with disabilities. Are there any con, was it, is it the cohort? Are there any con, was it, is it the cohort? Or are there other factors that you think contributed to that outcome?
Our special ed team, you know, in their continuous improvement process, really dove deep and started to look at, what are the supports available? There was a lot of learning that's happening inside the department, what are the resources? What takes in graduation? Director John Bell was really critical, and starting to build, so what are the plans? And continuing on some of that work, and so, we saw some of those efforts come to fruition. And by keep on diving deeper into each individual student, what does that individual student need? What does their IEP need? Are our supports aligned to that IEP? Our ELO supports, our credit retrieval supports. And so, we continue to get better at providing those supports. And so, I would say it's a combination of hard work that's happening at the day-to-day operations of both families and staff members. And we, as a district, are continuing to build better systems of support as well.
I would also echo that we have a pretty strong co-teaching model at many of our high schools. And teachers are really buying into that, that model, and getting trained to work together and serve the needs of our special education students within our general ed classrooms.
Also, I think our inclusion preschools, I think are setting that foundation for that model to continue forward. And I just make a comment on that. I was in Olympia on Monday afternoon, and I'll talk a little bit about that on Board Comments when Superintendent Santorno and CFO Medina were there commenting on where we are as a district. And they did an amazing job, quite frankly, which none of us are surprised, I'm sure. But some of the, they were talking also, and this was in the Senate Ways and Means Committee, about funding special ed, which as we know, has been underfunded since time immemorial. But one of the comments, Seattle pulled out their number, and it was way down in the 70s in every, even the smaller districts. And it was lower than ours. It wasn't even in the 70s. It was lower, it was much lower. And I thought, you know, we're on the right track, because I had just reviewed for the agenda that that major increase that we're not, it's like we've done everything else, that laser focus of addressing the kids that aren't succeeding. So, I felt really good when I saw where we stood in conjunction with some of the other school districts. Has their numbers that we're on the right, I guess we're on the right road is what I'm saying. And hopefully, we'll be able to, we'll be able to continue that and get a graduation rate that is equivalent to everyone else's. So, it was, just for a little context about where we are at that 69.8, put us pretty up in some rarefied air.
I would just add one rather champion that sometimes is lost, I saw a little bit of bragging. I think we got these really amazing students.
Yes, we do.
So, you know, as we go through these, and we, as the adults, provide more supports and stuff, more than ever, our students are demonstrating that what we've always believed is, is they're the shining stars. They're the ones that are knocking on the doors and asking for more help. And then, we have really caring and empathetic and supporting educators. But the students are the real reasons why our rates continue to go higher.
Any further questions or comments?
Can I just ask one quick follow-up? And no one has to know the answer, but just for context, have the graduation requirements been the same for any of these cohorts that we're looking at from 2013 to 18? Have they been the same any one year in a row?
There's some similar trends sometimes, you know, assessments. But no, they keep on tweaking, and they tweak again, and they'll tweak again. And that's the thing that as we celebrate these successes, and you know, we're all, we talk internally, is this, every year, it's a different game, meaning different rules that students have to meet, different obligations, different acceptance of what criteria is. But the reality is, is that's the same across the state for all students. And our educators are very good at classroom, all the way to the district, to say, what does it take for this student to be successful? You laid this as a foundation and a belief about multiple measures and multiple opportunities. But each cohort is a little different, but it is the same for each cohort across the state.
Great.
They don't seem to be getting easier every year. They seem to be getting higher expectations each year, so.
Yeah, I just want to say that I had five grandchildren graduate from 2012 to 2017, and every single one of them had a different requirements for graduation.
You can imagine counselors and how they had to keep up on year to year, all the different student requirements.
It was hard to get an answer to some of that.
And for those, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I think, Marie, you made a really good point. Assistant Superintendent Bahar, for our counselors, they are, in many cases, in our high schools. And I think most of them are kind of unsung heroes sometimes, because they're constantly in that adjustment game of making sure, you got this credit. Annika, you could comment, I'm sure, on that. That they're constantly, you've got these credits, you've got these, and so on. So, but I think the fact that we've made those adjustments has been, to me, pretty significant. I've seen some of the school districts did well, and then they go backwards for a year or two while they're, while they're doing that. So, you know, we aren't the state's only district of innovation for anything. And we show it when we are able to quickly adjust and do what we need to do for what's best for our kids. But Dr. Garcia, I agree with you about our rock star kids. I mean, you look at them across the district, and the fact that we've created that culture, that it's no longer just the nerds that are the rock stars in our schools. And I think that's a big change that I've seen, just in the time that I've been here, from just being around a lot of kids. I know Director Renske was there when I said, my little Christopher, who had been, I worried about whether he was gonna make it. And he made it very well, and now owns his own photography business. But when I asked him, what turned you around, because he was kind of a little more worried about making an impression as the class clown than he was. And he went to Lincoln, your alma mater, and he said, well, Mrs. V, I'll tell you what, I figured it out. It was no longer cool to be fool of the school. And that was exactly what it was. And we've got that culture that everybody better achieve and move on. And I, hopefully, we can continue to develop and push that forward. And Annika, I think you know that at Boss. Okay. Okay, any further comments? Thank you. Always exciting report.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, Board Comments. I'm gonna start with Annika, because I know it's getting testing time, and she probably needs to be home doing reviewing and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah, it's okay. I don't have a report today.
Okay, great, and thank you. I want to say something about Annika, or at Christmas time, she was in the most successful production of the Tacoma Musical Playhouse, of their White Christmas. And if you want to see an amazing, young, talented person, you watch her in dancing, singing, and what have you. And so, I want to give you a shout-out for that. It was, it was really, really great. It was the highest they've ever had for anyone, their production that they have. And they're pretty well-known nationally and so on, so, anyway, good job. Okay, Andrea, I'll start with you, Director Cobb.
I don't have a report tonight.
Director Renske.
So, I have a few things up. So, I went to the Superintendent Breakfast this morning, and there was just a wonderful presentation by David Kellogg, a teacher at Oakland who's certified in drones. And he had people up there demonstrating, and it was, he did a really nice job. People get certified in his class and can get jobs in drone, droneness, I don't know. Anyway, that was very impressive. And then, I went to two little breakout sessions that were wonderful. One was autism, UWT has an autism program, and they deal with individuals, but they also help teachers. And they, I don't know that they work too much at Tacoma Schools, but they would like to work more with Tacoma Schools. And I was very impressed by the presentation that they gave. It was only 30 minutes long, and they could have done a lot longer, but it was really good. I think everyone in the room appreciated it. And then, I went to another one on trafficking, sex trafficking. And that starts at the age of 12, and oftentimes, and it was very interesting. We have it here in Tacoma, Pierce County. And so, it was timely for people to come today and talk to us about that. When I had, saw the few people come and speak to us, so I hope that we'll get back to the Elks Club about who to talk to in Tacoma with their drugs, drug program, which we appreciate. And I would like to know more about our changes in food, because I, that's the first time I've heard that there's a change. And so, if there was a change in breakfast, and our breakfast rates went down, I'd like to know that. So, maybe you could report on that in the next few days.
So, it's, one of the things I think it's important to note is, this is currently a pilot. And so, you know, we are piloting some, a modification of some foods. I don't know, Chris, can you talk a little bit more about what that looks like?
So, like, it is, the key word is a pilot. If it's not successful, we'll go back and continue to make changes. Like any other department, we're faced with limited resources and being more efficient with tax dollars. So, we worked with our internal staff, looked at data, and worked with our staff within the kitchens to identify some of the items on which we can potentially eliminate or use less frequently. So, our pilot begins, I want to say, the 4th of February. And we'll look at the data and make adjustments as necessary.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, so I know that the legislature said last year that we had to pay for lunches, even if the kids don't pay. We had to give them lunches, and it's costing quite a bit of money. So, it'd be nice to know what that dollar amount is. I think it's way up there. I don't know if you know it right now.
I will say that we're trending double than what we were last year. I think currently, well, I'll take that back. I think we're tripled the amount of where we at last year. I think currently, our deficit right now is $100,000. And this is an issue facing many districts, so it's not just isolated towards.
No, I do know that. There's been a lot of articles in the paper about how districts are suffering. So, that's something to really talk to the legislature about, you know, one of these unfunded mandates and what it means in the end. So, I hope we're talking to people down there.
Can I ask a follow-up question about that? How do we communicate to families who can pay, that they need to pay? And I know that this question sounds kind of silly, but I have actually had conversation with parents who are able to pay. And their kids came home and said, no, they let me eat for free. And so, they've gotten into this routine of not sending them with money, because they can just eat. So, how do we, I know the practice in the past was just that you pay for, like, there was different process. So, how do we communicate to families who can pay, that they should pay?
So, in beginning the school year, we changed kind of our procedure. We've sent out robocalls to parents, as well as sent out letters to inform them of delinquent accounts. And unfortunately, with the change in law, we, you know, we cannot offer additional food to students. So, they're free, unfortunately, to continue to take lunches or breakfasts without cost.
There are, there are some guidelines and some restrictions about communication, so that families don't feel shame and pressure for those that are unable to. And so, we continue to learn. It's new for us. I think spreading the word of mouth, demystifying that there. But as we know, there's different times where that's not a reality. Right now, in a situation where we just send a message out to families, if there are families that are on furloughs, that we're here to support and provide the supports that we can. And so, we try to recognize that each individual family goes through uncertain times. And we will just have to continue to find a way to help spread that message.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to see the results of the pilot too. I worked over on Eastside Schools. I know how important it was when we went to the Real Healthy Meal stuff. And I know we gotta save money, and I know, and I'm sure you can figure out how to do that. And yet, at the same time, balance the menus. I've seen us do that before, so I have confidence in that. But I am concerned about, I think we all are, anytime you start talking about dealing with food, and you don't want to, but you have to, and it's one of those things. And the legislature is very well aware of what they did, and they're hearing about it from everybody. I think Seattle's bill I saw was just astronomical. And if parents can pay, I mean, then we should assume our responsibility of being able to do that. So, hopefully, that'll get straightened out. One thing I want to talk about just briefly is going to Olympia on Monday. Superintendent Santorno and CFO, it was a work-study session, a work session for the Senate Ways and Means Committee to examine some issues. Primarily, it was on special education, levy funding and levy equalization, some of the things that we're always going through. And there were several panels, and I want to tell you that one of the senior lobbyists, who's been around as long as I have been, said, how do we clone them? So, what he meant was when Carla and Superintendent Santorno and CFO Medina gave their report, it was very concise, very straightforward, and right to the point. And they only took seven minutes, and Seattle took a lot longer than that. And finally, the chair had to kind of stop them and keep them moving. Yeah, don't laugh, Carla, I know. Keep them moving on. And what came out of that was that we opened the door for a new issue that we've been talking about as a district, and we did it on purpose. And that was to make, Carla made the point that she felt that the way in which that this had been done, as we have said over and over again from this day, for the last year and almost two years, this is a civil rights issue that the legislature needs to come back and correct. If you look at the numbers they had, Lake Washington School District with 7% poverty rate receiving, I forgot how much money they were getting vis-a-vis us. They had a, they had a great big chart that was not, if I were a legislator, I would have been embarrassed when I looked at that. And poor little Yakima was down on the bottom, getting $457 per student. So, we're getting a lot of other districts that are saying the same, the same thing. And I don't think, with all, with all due respect to the legislature, and I do respect the people there. I worked with, in the governor's office with the legislature for five years and a couple of other jobs also. They didn't do it on purpose. It was just a running numbers and I don't know what, because I know that they are good, good people, and they want to fix this. And we got the feeling, at least I got the feeling, that now they really understand there. But I just want to say how proud I was of our superintendent and Roslin, because they just laid it out. They laid out what we are looking at, when we only get $1,500 per kid rather than $2,500. Now, there's a new, I filled in for Scott because he was ill, he actually was out of town and got ill, is that they're looking at some, trying to balance on some of the levy equalization, that perhaps giving money to school districts that don't pass levies, particularly the small rural districts. That's one kind of a political solution to dealing with large school districts, rural school districts. There's been three basic bills. The other one that was introduced was going back to the 28% of school districts being able, the 28% threshold that's been there since 1983, of allowing the school districts to run a levy at 28% of, based upon their budget, up to 28%. Basically, the same formula that we had back before the legislature changed this. And then, the other one is to, the bill that we are, we are, 20% would make us whole, I believe. Did we not say that, Superintendent Santorno, basically?
20 million?
20%, if we went to that levy, would close. We would be close. We would be almost the same as the 2,500. So, but we have been supporting the option, the local, the ability of us as local officials to set either $1.50 per thousand or $2,500 per student. That seems to be the one that seems to be resonating right now in Olympia, the one that we thought was fixed last session and not. So, anyway, that's where we are, and that's what went on. And if you'd like to add anything, feel free to do so.
Yeah, I think that was good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, announcements of future board meetings, Thursday, February 14th, 2019, 6:00 p.m., regular business meeting. So, hopefully, we will get some Valentine cards, since we were, or tell your husband he can't take you out to dinner till after we're done. Thursday, a little levity here. Thursday, the 20, February 21st, 2019, at 6:00 o'clock, a study session. And Saturday, February 23rd, 2019, 8:30 to 11:30, the board will hold a retreat. And have we decided on the, we haven't really announced the location yet, have we?
It's going to be at the office for the Foundation for Tacoma Students.
And it is open to the public, so, and that will be on the 23rd. We have no executive session tonight. And with that, thank you, board members, for a good meeting. We'll adjourn the meeting. Josh, did you have anything to add?